I'll please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to take a minute at the beginning of this evening's meeting just to express actually what amounts to condolences to California. They certainly have been hit hard this past week plus between the loss of life at Thousand Oaks, the loss of life in the multiple fires that they've had throughout that state. I think that I can say that our thoughts and prayers go to those folks. And I was listening to the news this morning, and you know, the thing that always strikes me when something like this happens is the number of people that step up to offer help. And they were talking about the fact that some of these communities had no way of getting supplies in because the fire had pretty much closed off the roads. And so they have folks that are actually bringing food and water and supplies in by water. And one gentleman was quoted as saying he, actually he and his son had lost their homes in one of the fires, but he was on the front lines of helping to bring supplies in to those folks that needed them. And said that you feel the need to want to help in a situation like this. And I thought that's really true. And how sad it is sometimes that it takes a terrible disaster like that to get people to pull together. So anyway, our thoughts go to them. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is a listing of a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. It's designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by council. I will ask if a citizen or a member of the council wishes to have any specific item removed from Consent Agenda prior to council's vote. The items on tonight's Consent Agenda include the approval of the work session, regular meeting minutes of October the 23rd, 2018; approval of the expenditure vouchers of November the 13th, 2018; approval of the renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Lounche and Lizard. So is there anybody that would like to see any of those items removed from the Consent Agenda? All right, in that case, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, with expenditures of $98,704.91.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Noiz?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Betz?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
We have no presentations this evening. At this time, are there any citizens that would like to address council? If you'd please state your name and address, and you can use either one of those mics. You need to speak in the mic so that we can record you for live streaming.
My name's Glenn Brace. I'm sure Mike Green knows why I'm here. I'm just basically giving a copy of the paper that I sent to him and the other individuals involved. And I just want to make sure that you guys have a copy of it as well. Is that okay? Do you want me to hand it to each and every one of you, or just?
Well, if you wanted to give them to Mike and just pass them down, that will save a little bit of time. And then you can tell us what it's about.
Well, basically, all this is is a notice for Colorado Revise Statute 24-10-109. Basically, I sent out the letters per the statute, certified return receipt, and I have 90 days for the all parties involved to respond. But I just wanted you guys to kind of be in the loop of everything of what's going on.
So is what you're saying that you think you were charged with something that resulted in legal fees and loss of revenue unfairly?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to address council? All right, at that time, then we will move on to public hearings, Ordinance 1257, the final reading of the Water Conservation Plan, Phil.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. I'm here to do, we're here to do the second reading of the Conservation Plan, which is the public hearing and second reading for Ordinance Number 1257, Series 2018, in ordinance adopting by reference the 2018 Water Conservation Plan for the City of Cortez, promoting efficient consumption of all water usage by residents, businesses, and local governments to be, to more beneficial use of water resources and ensure a future adequate water supply. Being that this is the second reading in the public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and read the memo. I know we skipped over it last time because you guys have heard it many times, but this is a little different. So, the background. The city's Water Conservation Plan describes our water resources and how we can utilize our current resources in more efficient ways. The city originally adopted a Water Conservation Plan in 1996, which was revised and adopted through Ordinance Number 1143, Series 2010, in accordance with the state requirements. The city is required to have an updated Water Conservation Plan every seven years to comply with the state mandate for accepting grants or loans from the state. Ordinance 1257, Series 2018, is our updated plan that confirms, conforms, excuse me, to current water conservation practices. The plan contains information on the physical characteristics of the city's existing water system and inventory of resources. It describes water supplies, water pricing, water use, and future forecasts, and proposes to implement water savings programs with larger expenses in different years to minimize the impact to the city. Ongoing projects are planned to be done within existing city operations as they are currently performed. Ordinance 1257, Series 2018, was presented to council at their regular meeting on October 23rd, 2018, with the final draft of the 2018 Water Conservation Plan and appendix. A 60-day period, August 31 through October 28, 2018, to receive questions and comments was required prior to adoption of the ordinance. A public notice was advertised in the local newspaper and put on the city's website for comments to be received at the city's clerk's office at City Hall or via email at conservationplan.2018@cityofcortez.com, no later than November 1, 2018. Only one comment was received, and it is attached to this memo. Recommendation: Staff recommends adopting Ordinance 1257, Series 2018, bringing us into conformance with state requirements for accepting grants or loans from the state. If council agrees with staff, they can make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1257, Series 2018, adopting by reference the 2018 Water Conservation Plan for the City of Cortez.
All right, council, are there any questions or comments?
I don't have any.
Okay, at that time, I will open this for the public hearing. If there's anybody in the office, in the audience that would like to speak for or against the adoption of the city's Water Conservation Plan. All right, seeing no takers, public hearing is closed. If there are no other questions, comments, may I have a motion?
Your Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1257, Series 2018, adopting by reference 2018 Water Conservation Plan for the City of Cortez.
Second.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Betz?
Aye.
Noiz?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson.
All right, Resolution 24, Series 2018, is approving the Old High School as a minor subdivision. Niva.
Okay, good evening. Can you guys hear me today from here?
A little better.
I have a lot to say tonight, so, all right.
I'll translate for you.
Okay. The City of Cortez has received an application from Lori Hockness, representative for owner Monazuma Cortez RE1 School District, to create a two-lot minor subdivision on the property officially known as the Old High School. The property is bounded by Oak Street on the west, Seventh Street on the south, South Chestnut Street on the east, and residences to the north. It's approximately 14 acres. The plan is to create Lot 1, which is almost 11 acres on the western portion of the property, and Lot 2, of 3.3 acres on the eastern portion of the property. The city intends to purchase this property from the RE1 School District. Lot 1 is the future site of a neighborhood park that's currently in the planning process. And the Monazuma Housing Authority has signed a letter of intent with the city to purchase Lot 2 for future housing. Future access for Lots 1 and 2 will be determined at the site planning level. The conceptual plan for the future park shows access off of Seventh Street, Oak Street, and there is an easement for the development of Elm Street. And right now, the easement is undedicated on the plat, which will give us some flexibility in determining what exactly the city will need with the park and the future housing plans. So that easement for Elm Street is not set in stone at a, at a, dedicated with right now. The subdivision has met all of the standards in Section 6.11, which is the Minor Subdivision chapter of our Land Use Code. There were some comments with staff on this, and the plat has been edited to meet the comments from staff. Empire Electric and Atmos Gas did not submit comments under the report, but staff did work with the agencies and the surveyor to place the required easements on the plat. So they have been added to this plat. City staff does recommend approval of the Old High School Minor Subdivision through Council Resolution Number 24 with three conditions, one of which is that the final plat must show a 15-foot drainage easement on the northern portion of Lot 2. That's currently where drainage from the existing Elm Street comes down and exits onto what's going to be Lot 2 and out to Chestnut Street. So our associate city engineer recommended that we add that drainage easement.
Okay, council, any questions?
I don't have any.
All right, then I'm gonna open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this resolution? Public hearing is closed. If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24, Series 2018, approving the Old High School Minor Subdivision, submitted by Lori Hockness, represented by the owner of Monazuma School District RE1, with four conditions, and authorize the mayor to sign the plat.
My second, ma'am.
Noiz?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Betz?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, Resolution 25, Series 2018, approving the division of a lot in the industrial park into two smaller lots. Niva.
Okay, so this is another minor subdivision, and I do apologize, I believe one of the owners is here, and your resolution is going to be incorrect. I consistently misspelled the representative's last name incorrectly. It's James Hunter, not James Holder. So the resolution will need to be changed to reflect that. Okay. The City of Cortez has received an application from James Hunter, representative for the owner F&amp;F Holdings LLC, to create a two-lot minor subdivision of the property addressed at 2003 Industrial Road. The property consists of Lot 11 of the Cortez Industrial Park and is 3.83 acres in size. The zoning is industrial. The subdivision proposal is to create Lot 11A at 1.4 acres and Lot 11B at 2.5 acres. Lot 11A is already developed with a warehouse on site. Lot 11B is vacant. The proposal will not create any new roads or utilities. As you can see, this parcel is fully surrounded by roadways, so there will not need to be additional access created for this lot. Currently, no utilities will need to be extended. If Lot 11B gets developed, the service lines will need to be extended, but that's typical with any development. There were some comments by agencies regarding some existing easements that needed to be widened to account for some utilities that were in place. And so those changes were made on the plat. Staff does recommend approval of this minor subdivision with our two conditions, our standard conditions that we add to all of our planning projects. But I will need to change the resolution before you guys sign it to...
To the correct name?
To the correct name, yes.
Mr. Hunter, would you like to address council, or? Sure.
What we're attempting to do here is divide this lot off because my business partner and I had this property for sale, and the school district approached us, was interested in the building, but they weren't interested in the adjoining land that was part of what we're holding here. And so I went to the planning department and asked them if it was possible to subdivide this land off to accommodate the school district, and they said yes. And therefore, we started the process. And so that's where we're at. So that is the reason why we want to divide this off, basically to accommodate the school district. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions or comments, council?
I don't have any.
All right, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this minor subdivision? All right, seeing nobody come forward, public hearing is closed. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 25, Series 2018, approving Lot 11A and Lot 11B, minor subdivision of the Cortez Industrial Park, as submitted by James Hunter, manager of F&amp;F Holdings LLC, owner, with two conditions, and authorizing the mayor to sign the plat.
My second. Betz? Betz? Noiz?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
And Mike, we're okay with the verbiage, right?
Yes.
And what we'll do is we'll do a corrected version for the mayor to sign and get...
One second, ma'am.
I'll get it signed tomorrow.
Okay.
Just doesn't have to sign it tonight, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We'll all sign it tomorrow. Okay, thanks, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ms. Honor.
All right, we have no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, Resolution 26, Series 2018, approval of an amended plat in the Tucker subdivision, submitted by Mark Rogers. Niva?
I have a copy here. And do you have these plats, these minors, or do I need to do something?
I need to get them from the...
Sure. I guess I'll work on that tomorrow. You can be in the office. I'll get all the in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. The City of Cortez has received an application from property owner Mark Rogers requesting a plat amendment for Lot 1 of the Tucker subdivision. So I have the lot up on the screen, and you can see that it, it's a long skinny lot that actually goes from Tucker Court all the way to Highway 145. That when you're, when I was looking at the plat, the plat's a little confusing as to what's actually happening. So this is what the current aerial looks like right now. The proposal is to relocate the lot line of Lot 1 to align with the western lot line of the adjacent property, which is the Baptist Chapel on Dolores Road. The Baptist Church will gain almost 10,000 square feet, and the Lot 1 parcel will go from almost 22,000 square feet to 12,357 square feet. The Baptist Chapel plans to use the added property as a future playground area. There are no new egress or ingress points proposed for this plat amendment. So all that's gonna happen with this plat amendment is that the long, the property line, let's see. Well, I don't have a little pointer guy here, but it's just gonna drop down to be even with all the other property lines of the subdivision. And that rectangular piece is going to go to the Baptist Church there.
The building that's on the left?
No, the top.
Oh, oh, oh.
The little cutout piece will extend all the way down to the roof. Like there's the Church of Earth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so the church is right up here.
Just that bottom piece there on the right.
Okay. So 1602 Tucker Court is the residence on the left, the bottom left. And their property goes all the way from Tucker Court to Highway 145. This plat amendment is going to drop that property line to be even with all of the other property lines right there. So it's gonna be easier for the property owner to maintain.
Nope, see, most of this is... And it juts out. So it's just gonna, the part that juts out, it's just gonna bring it down so that it's even with the street.
No, okay.
Right. Are there any questions, council?
I don't have any.
That land's gonna be a playground for the Baptist Chapel?
It may be. And I haven't, I've heard that from the applicant, but I have not heard that from the Baptist Church. So I'm not, I'm not sure. But it will be one continuous piece of property now.
Mark, would you like to address council, or? State your name and address, please.
Got my choices, I can... Mark Rogers, I'm the owner of 1602 Tucker Court. As you can see, that section of that, of the lot, I don't know why they did it that way back in the original Tucker subdivision, but anyway, it ended up with that long piece that was attached to 1602. It, it's big enough, it's a buildable-sized lot, according to the building department, so a person could put a house on it. But the, been talking with the church, actually for several years or a couple of years, and they would like to have it for their future either building. They wanna maybe put a pavilion on it, a playground, no telling. I don't know. But they just would like to have it. And of course, they'd obviously like to not have something built on it. So they'd like to have it for their, add to their property. So we've come to a mutual agreement, and that's what I'm proposing, is to split that off and all in, sell then. Then after it's split, then we'll sell it to the church. Any questions?
I have none, Mr. Rogers, thank you.
I'm sorry?
I have none.
Okay, no question.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Thank you very much. All right, if there are, are there any other questions, comments?
I don't have any. None.
Then may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the amended plat, Lot 1 of the amended plat Tucker subdivision, through Council Resolution Number 26, Series 2018, with the following conditions.
Second.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Noiz?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Betz?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Cancellation of the December 25th council meeting, Linda.
How do you guys feel about doing that?
I don't know.
I think we should...
Well, if we're gonna do it, I want to remember Ben Lobster for dinner.
Hey, hey.
I heard you guys might be gone somewhere, so it might be nice. If it was on Wednesday, I think we could go for that. But what do you think, Tuesday, Christmas Day? I'd be happy to put a motion in. Thank you, Sue.
Well, may I have a motion, please? I make a motion that the city, the council, cancel the council meeting scheduled for December 25, 2018, due to the holidays.
My second that.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lucero? Come on, Ornie.
No. Eyes gonna hurt. No. Okay, yeah.
Betz?
Aye.
Noiz?
Aye.
Sheik? Such enthusiasm. I bow eye.
Thank you, guys.
All right, now you can do something else on Christmas Day. Ordinance 1258, Series 2018, having to do with historic structures. Niva?
Okay, I'll make this brief because you're gonna hear this again in a couple of weeks. So this ordinance is to designate four separate properties on the City of Cortez Local Registry of Historic Properties. We've had, the city and the Historic Preservation Board has had five grants to survey various properties and streets in the City of Cortez. The last grant was finished in 2017 for the south side of Main Street, and there were several properties eligible for historic, for listing on the historic register. We've had kind of a lull in this because we, with Mike's help, we revised the Historic Preservation Application Form, and that took a while. But we think we've got it down, so we've got at least four properties with several more applications out, and we're hopeful that they will turn those in. The properties in this ordinance are the Main Street Brewery at 21 East Main Street, Brand Central at 111 through 113 East Main Street, Slaven's True Value at 237 West Main Street, and a home site historically known as the Cawkins and Merlo House at 202 West North Street. So those property owners have come forward to the city with the correct Historic Preservation Application Form filled out, and they are ready to go. So I guess this is just to set the public meeting date for the second reading.
Now, once they are recognized as historic sites, that doesn't preclude the owners of those buildings from changing them if they choose. If they choose to change too much, then they're just taken off the register. Is that how that works?
Yes, so part of the agreement when they apply is that they agree to come and talk to the Historic Preservation Board before they make any changes. And if they do make changes that are so significant the board decides that they're not eligible anymore, they'll just be delisted. There's not any sort of penalty, or we can't tell them they cannot make those changes.
Okay. All right, council, questions, comments?
I do have a question for the years. Does there a set year? Like, I mean, does that make a difference? I'm looking at one of these in 1952. I mean, is there like 55 and older, or?
It's 50, 50 years and older. Yeah, so a property to be even eligible has to be older than 50 years, or 50 years and older.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, may I have a motion, council? All right, may I have a motion, counsel?
Um, Chair, I would make a motion to approve upon first reading ordinance number 1258, series 2018, approving four separate structures located within the original townsite of Cortez and Coffin's addition to be approved in the City of Cortez Register of Historic Structures, Sites and Districts, specifically the structures located at 21 East Main Street, 111 to 113 East Main Street, 237 West Main Street and 202 West North Street, and set for public hearing on November 27, 2018.
Second.
Keel.
Aye.
Betts.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Noyes.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye. All right, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances, we actually have no other items of business. At this time, is there a citizen that would like to address counsel? Okay, we have no city attorney's report. Does the city manager have an update?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder that tomorrow night is the budget review with the council, uh, at 5:15.
We can hardly wait.
Well, this one'll be better than the last one.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay. Uh, committee reports, I know Julia's one.
I went to the Makeda meeting today. Um, one of the big things they discussed was they did a strategic planning session back in June, at that time, they set a bunch of benchmarks, and I think partially because they did change executive directors, they are slightly delayed on that, so if any of you are planning on attending the Makeda Economic Summit to be held in December, please be advised, it will most likely be moved to sometime in the first quarter. Um, also, let's see what else we've got going here, they're, they're really looking for new memberships, they would look for, um, some diverse, uh, business interests, and so they're looking at ways to expand, growing memberships. Also, they did discuss the budget of 2019, it has not yet, as of yet, been, um, approved. They discussed, um, going back to the county commissioners, hoping that there will be some more buy-in from the commissioners, um, and they did mention a new commissioner who they would be approaching at some point.
What's his name?
And they also talked about the, they did a report on the Four Corners Future Forum that both Haley, Haley Saunders and Robert Dobry attended. Um, they also discussed, um, looking into a new tax credit, um, that benefits early childhood programs, and so they're trying to get some information here, so if you're interested in that, to keep an eye out for that, and I believe that is, oh, and they're going to do a cell phone list for the Makeda Board, so I have to submit yours to them, but that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Sure. Are there any other committees anybody has attended?
We had our final golf advisory board meeting on the 24th. Uh, the tentative date to close the course was the 15th of this month. Uh, I'm not sure what that's looking like, since it's been warming up during the day, I think some people are still playing, so.
Warm enough for who?
Uh, if you, if you go out there, it's not that cold.
Oh, geez.
So, so, long story short, uh, I'm not sure when they're gonna close it. I'm not sure if you've heard anything, John, or?
I have not.
Okay, so if they go out there and tell you not to play golf, I guess they close it down for the season and next, next few days. So that's Thursday, November 15th. Uh, just buttoned up some business, um, looked at a, a report on reasons why sometimes tree thinning on places like golf courses is actually very beneficial, which is a really good article, uh, and, uh, kinda dispelled some of the myths behind tree removal, um, and I thought that was important to see, and other than that, uh, you know, Micah and, and Tom had done a wonderful job out there with that course this year, and kudos to those guys, we were very lucky to get Tom off the front range, and of course we all know how, how well Micah does out there with his management of that place, so, uh, yeah, buttoning down for the winter, that's about it.
Okay. Any other committees anybody's been to? Okay, in that case, uh, report on the workshop, we had a presentation by Phil Johnson, Public Works Director, on his revised 2018 budget. Uh, discussion of a land donation, a citizen in the community wants to donate a small sliver of land to the city, I think we've decided that we may pass on that. Uh, there was a discussion on the results of the residential broadband survey that, um, we, um, commissioned, and, um, we were very pleased at, at the results of that survey, and so we're gonna be moving forward and putting out an RFP to, um, broadband companies to perhaps come in and, and establish service here. Uh, we reviewed a trip to Fort Morgan that the mayor, city manager and general services director, um, took recently, and that was the workshop. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, we're, yeah, I'm just, and now we're going to adjourn, we have an executive session that we need to go into in order to be able to, uh...
Receive legal advice.
To, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding current litigation and finance matters, we will have to come back here to adjourn, so if there are any of you that would like to stay until we finish.
You all have to wait until we come back.
You can do that, or you can, you can leave, it's up to you.
Hey, feels like the boilers went down. What happened?
Yeah, they did. It was Monday 59 in here. Holy moly, it was cold. Sixty-two the next day. It didn't warm up to three degrees because we were in our coats. Hey, what is it? Yawn.
We don't have that.
We're great at standing on our own.
Yeah.
Here we get that one.
Yep. Okay, got a promotion to a juror. Thank you.
Hi, sexy.
All right, maiden second as we're adjourned.
All right.